Call this meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent prayer for our servicemen and women throughout the world and also for all those who have passed away in our community.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Donahue?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Gahan?
Here.
Mr. Rogan?
Here. Please dispense with the reading of the minutes.
Third order, 3A Tax Assessors Report. Hearing date to be held July 25, 2018.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3B Minutes of the regular meeting of the members of the Scranton Housing Authority, held May 7, 2018, and June 4, 2018.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3C Minutes of the regular meeting of the Lackawanna County Land Bank, held May 11, 2018.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed. Do any council members have announcements at this time? I have a few. First, an executive session was held prior to our meeting tonight regarding potential litigation. Secondly, the city will provide free electronics recycling this Friday, July 20. Residents can drop off electronic recyclables at the DPW, 101 Poplar Street, from 6:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. Help will be available for loading items onto DPW trucks. For more information, please call the recycling coordinator, Tom Lynch, at (570) 348-4165. Lackawanna County is distributing farmers market nutrition vouchers this Wednesday, July 18, at the South Scranton Senior Center, 425 Alder Street, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And finally, fireworks in Neyog Park will be held on Wednesday, August 8, following the concert. For more information, you can call the Parks Department at (570) 348-4186.
And I just have one. I just want to ask everybody to keep a young man and his family in their prayers today. Former student of mine, Devon Walker, passed away Saturday. He was a very sick young man. He was very brave and he fought, fought very hard the last couple of years. And he was a really great kid, so I just want to ask everyone if they could keep him in their prayers and his family and his younger siblings. Thank you.
Fourth order, citizens' participation.
Our first speaker today is Joan Hodawanitz.
Joan Hodawanitz, resident and taxpayer. Okay, 14 days to recess, so you only have two more sessions after today. Which brings to mind, we need a status update. Any chance of getting the audit before the end of the month?
We haven't met since then, but I'll find out this afternoon with the PM meeting.
Okay, thank you. And the Arcadis stormwater study. Any chance of getting that before the end of the month? Well, if we don't, I would like to point out the June Controllers' Report, in which Arcadis U.S. Incorporated was paid $2,628.65. So in my opinion, the product should come before the payment, but hopefully we're edging towards that if they're getting paid. And pension reform, Mr. Rogan, any chance you might share with us recommendations before you go on recess?
I could talk about it a little bit more before the recess. Unfortunately, the legislation won't be until September at this point.
Okay, whatever you can tell us. I read the article in the paper on the legislation for legal services contract, and I saw the answers that were provided. But, Mr. Gahan, if you could, during motions, if you have any answers to the questions you proposed last week that might not have been addressed in the newspaper article, I think we would all be very interested. And I went last week to the county commissioners' meeting, and I asked if the commissioners were still considering vetting or privatizing the Tax Claim Bureau. And I was told that Controller DeBilio is in the process of vetting that proposal. So I hope that part of the process of this is going to move forward is that the county does consult with all the other taxing authorities in the county. And I would assume that the Scranton School District and the City of Scranton are the two largest taxing authorities other than the county itself before they would go forward with such a proposal. I understand that bids were opened this morning on paving contracts and a condition assessment of City Hall for long-term repairs. If I understand, there was only one bid received for the City Hall condition assessment, and that was from Highland Associates for, I think it was $39,500. And two bids were received for paving, $1.8 million and $1.9 million. I don't know if anybody attended that, but, Mr. Gahan, if you would address how the paving bids impact what was budgeted for paving this year. And also, in terms of the capital budget, I have all my papers packed away since I'll be moving at the end of the year. But in our capital budget, what have we assessed or earmarked for long-term repairs to City Hall? If I recall, we had the pocket park under the capital budget because we had a dire need for green space downtown, but where do we address City Hall's long-term repairs in the capital budget? Since I saw in the paper that we may be talking about long-term $8 million, that's a lot of money. Let's see, and if you would also address the upcoming caucuses next week with NDC and on July 30 with PEL for the recovery plan, so that people can mark it on their calendars. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave Dobson.
Once again, I'd like to call on our various entities suing the city. Do something productive for a change. Take the county and the state to court over the 35% tax-exempt entities in our city. They're taking a big chunk. I wouldn't mind 10% or something, considering it's a city. But I'd be willing to bet that many outlier communities are paying, 5% of their taxes are used up for the church in the valley by the Wildwood and the fire company and a borough building or what have you, or highways or something like that. So it's time to stop fighting with the city and start doing something productive. The city needs the money, and the only thing you can do is pile trash fees onto upscale houses. Somebody will be paying $1,000 more instead of the 300. And furthermore, if you privatize or leave it behind because someone's not paying, then what do you got but blight and trash piles all over? I had it when I lived up the country. So that's what I'm calling for. I agree with Joan, no to privatizing the Tax Claim Bureau. We need to keep the government as government, as a civil government, and not dole it out to a bunch of greedy, money-grubbing businessmen that are just interested in making money. And I also agree with Joan on these audits and appraisals of the sewer, storm sewer. It's really time that we start to deliver it, maybe a couple days late, and not a couple months later, almost a year later, we're making the budget for next year before we even know what's in the audit. I rely on them more than myself. I'm not an accountant-type person, so I'm more of a concept-type person. And let's see what else we have here. Okay, the summer schedule, you guys cost me about 20 bucks this month, guys. You know, I was amiable with the holiday thing on Mondays because I could get free parking easier than, because a lot of nights I had to pay anyway because something was going on up at the cultural center or whatever. But please consider keeping it nice, and hopefully everybody will attend. I know it gets, some people get a little testy and irrelevant. They talk about things outside the city or their ideas never would have worked. You see, I kind of blame some Pell and some of these people that, with the sewer plant sale and so forth, why didn't they ring the bell and just say no? You know, they're supposed to be directors, and all of a sudden we have all this consternation in the courts over these things. And, I mean, they could have just said, nah, we think that might be illegal, so why would, we really don't recommend it. You don't hear from them except that once a year, and they seem to ignore the fact that these lawsuits are a real loose cannon on a ship here. It could just roll over anybody. And I don't mean to get too carried away on this, but we have to watch with single-issue voters. This thing has gone too far. For instance, in Pennsylvania, we have the pro-life people, which I could see their point on abortion somewhat, but they're calling therapies to Planned Families as abort efficients and stuff. That's just crazy. They shouldn't have their nose into somebody else's life that far. And furthermore, if they want to, they should be paying taxes then, too. Thank you and have a good night, a dear, good day.
Thank you very much. Glenys Johns.
Well, good afternoon, city council and residents. My name is Glenys Johns. Here again, I just wanted to start out by saying, this time last year was my very first city council meeting that I ever attended, and I have to say that over the course of this year, I've done so many things with the help of city council and resident participation and just many, many people and organizations across the city. So I'm very, very thankful for that. But I did want to give the city an update on a lot of the projects that I've been doing that I'm super, super excited to announce and share with everyone. So over the past year, I have advocated for communities of color. I showed up, participated, and used the resources available to me to try and make a difference. I've created what I call a local heritage archival project that I am now calling the Black Scranton Project, and I'll explain what that is shortly. I'm here to give the city and council an update on, like I said, all of the projects and process that I've been making over the past year and offer ways for council and citizens to engage, involve, and contribute to this really, really cool local heritage initiative. So back in October of 2017, I proposed to city council and whoever is willing to help for me to nominate prominent members of the black community throughout history to PHMC, which is Pennsylvania Historical Museum Commission, and the Historical Marker Project. So in October, I proposed to city council to nominate two figures, George W. Brown Chucking Company, as well as Thomas C. House. I heard back from PHMC, unfortunately, both of my nominations were declined. However, I do not find that as a deterrent to this project. I'm working on nominating them again, as well as Ms. Louise Tanner-Brown, who was such a huge contributor and now my idol from this community, and I can't wait to talk more about her in the future and get everyone on board with this nomination because it will be a huge step in the right direction for recognizing people of color in this city. Another thing that I have been working on past that, in June of this year, I was awarded a grant from the Willery Foundation to continue my work intensely on this project, so I'm super excited about that. And the Lackawanna Historical Society has joined forces with me to make sure that my project is being archived properly, that I have the resources, the funding, and the knowledge to be able to archive documents, photographs, records, anything that's relevant to people of color in the city that might be useful to people in the future, students, educators, whoever wants to know about this. Lackawanna Historical Society is on board to help me create this project, and I'm so I'm also open to contributions, collaborations, and expanding on this project. The whole point of this project is to add black African-American culture to the fabric of Scranton's diverse culture/ethnicity narrative that we have here. So anyone that is interested, I have more information on that, on the Black Scranton Project, at blackscranton.com. You can also visit Lackawanna Historical Society. They'd be more than happy to share ways to get in touch with me and the project. While I'm here, I have to say, if anyone has any photographs that they don't know what to do with, any documents, records, newspapers, anything that can be useful to this, I am archiving it and holding on to it. So feel free to email me at info@blackscranton.com, or call, or visit Lackawanna Historical Society with anything that you need. I'm open to take any sorts of donations, anything, really. And the last thing that I have to say is, I am teaming up with Queer NEPA, and they are having an event this coming Saturday called Coffee Clatch, and it'll be taking place in Dunmore at, sorry. It'll be taking place at the Wonderstone Gallery this Saturday, 11:30 to 12:30, and they asked me to talk about my project and all of the things that I'll be doing with the city. So I'm really looking forward to meeting a diverse group of people in the city, talking about the ways that we can transcend from being in a marginalized space in this community and come together and actually do things that are very productive and positive for the city of Scranton. So if anyone has any questions, please let me know. Thank you again to city council, because I feel like I've grown so much as a person, and also it goes to show that if you really want to make a change in the city, that you can definitely do it. So yeah, I'll be back again to talk about any updates or any things that I have. So again, thank you, everyone, and that is all I have to say. Appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Glenys. Maurice Schumacher.
I'd like to start off with 7B, as that's your last chance to speak on it, I suppose. In looking over the contract, I noticed they said what system they're using for their billing, but they didn't say what kind of bills they were going to provide to the city. And for the, as I recall, the sewer bills were sort of like, here, pay me X dollars, and they didn't have hours, and they didn't have what they were even working on. So I would hope that before that is voted on and made law, that we have a clear understanding of what kind of bills we're going to receive from that company. Also, back on March 13, when Evan of Mr. Amoroso's company sat around the table with you and the county commissioners on reassessment, he said he wanted to do his own analysis, and I know the county is good on providing information, so I assume he got the information. But what about his analysis? Is that something we're going to see ever, or was that for his own edification?
We can ask for it, sure.
Okay, that would be nice. And now, back to the question of where in the budget? What is the account that is holding the $2.8 million that we have said we would provide as bills are presented to us for the renovation of the Electric City Garage? Because I've, the more I, the more difficulty I have finding out what account this is in, and I've been working at it since the budget was presented, it dawns on me, maybe, have we known all along that perhaps they weren't going to do anything, or they're not doing anything to help us save that 2.85, I guess it is, million dollars?
That money's in escrow with the Parking Authority, not with the city.
Pardon?
That money is in, if my memory's correct, that money's in escrow with the Parking Authority, not the city. The garages are all owned by the Parking Authority.
Then why did we, why are we paying, and you voted last week, as I recall, to pay the insurance for the liability, the liability insurance for the parking garages, to directly to ABM or AMB, whatever the proper?
I could check with the executive director for the Parking Authority. But again, because they don't have any funds coming in, the city guarantees everything to do with those garages, that would be my guess.
But why isn't it coming out of the money that's been?
That money's escrowed specifically for those repairs. That money cannot be taxed for anything else.
I would definitely like a confirmation that that's where the money is and the amount. And then on 5C for tonight, I read through that, and I could not decipher the source of the funds for that $50 gift to the sidewalks, to the Chamber of Commerce for the sidewalks down at Linden and whatever that other street is there. And how many feet of sidewalk is, do you get for $50,000?
We were just discussing this in the caucus. I think this is coming out of the budget.
Operating budget?
I'm pretty sure, I could be wrong, but I'm pretty sure there was a long narrative in the budget about this project. I didn't have a chance to go back and pull that, but I will have that for next week. But I'm pretty sure that this $50,000 was budgeted for 2018. I could be wrong, but...
Well, that project wasn't even known until, as I recall, a couple of months ago, so I don't know how it could be in the budget.
It's unreal, the sidewalks are unrelated to the Sheets project. The sidewalks were going in at Mount Pleasant. That was in the works for a long time.
I, for the life of me, don't know why taxpayers are paying for that.
Well, it's a public street.
And again, you had promised the pension, what you'd gleaned from the Pennsylvania State Police information before the break, and now that's not happening?
Well, I could give an update before the break, but the legislation has not been completed yet. We have the framework for the legislation, but kind of been going back with the administration.
For something that was going to be tackled, get right on it as soon as you got it. That was December, early December, it seems. And then, I think when you return in September, it would be nice if you had Chief Graziano, if I may finish this sentence, come in and tell us, it's now about three years since the police contract was executed, whether or not it's panned out as the taxpayers were promised that it would turn out. So that would be nice if he could join you for a caucus in September. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council?
Good afternoon, council. I'd like to start out with, I got a couple of things here. Did anybody check into that road situation where Black Tie Used Car Lot took over the road? Anybody check into that? Let me remind you, it's a dangerous situation. There's going to be an accident there, you know? All right, whatever. Okay, did anything come up on that proposal for that vacant pipe, or whatever you want to call it, that we discovered that's not being used for the drainage, for the flooding problem in Kaiser Valley there?
Yeah, we sent a request to convene the meeting that we spoke about last Monday, but we did not get a response yet from the administration. So as soon as we get something back from them on when they can meet, the day and the time and the place, I believe it will probably be in the mayor's office like last time, like I said, I will reach out to you and Jean.
So, you see, I'm getting to learn the way it works. So when we don't get a reply, for how long? Should I bring it up again?
If we don't get a reply by next Monday, then I will bring it up again. I think the letter was sent out July 12, so, you know, I would expect by next Monday we'll have some sort of idea and they'll respond. But if they don't, we'll send a second request.
Thanks, Bill.
Okay?
Now, see, I'm saying this because now that I moved back into the house, you know, my house burned and I rebuilt the house, and I'm back in the neighborhood since July 1st. You know, that retention pond that's completely filled, last week I failed to mention that it's worse than ever before. Right now, just a moderate rain floods everything. Three times I've been flooded now since I moved back in July 1st. We've gotten the storms, you know, not super nasty ones. The one storm was only 15 minutes long, and sure enough, my garage was filled with water. Thank God I took the precautions for the house that I just built. But, see, I don't understand what I have to go through to get a reply, you know, like this is three years I'm fighting with the flooding problem. So it's been three weeks I've been calling DPW. Nobody will talk to me about the retention pond. They all tell me I gotta talk to Dennis Gallagher. And I have left countless messages with him a couple a week to please have the courtesy to call me back. Even if you tell me that there's nothing you can do for that pond, at least give me a call back. I've never gotten a call. Now, you know, where's the fine line that I start bad-mouthing Dennis Gallagher? Or, you know, you guys gotta know, I'm as nice as I can be when I come here. I don't flip out, you know? But, man, what do you have to do to get a phone call? Like I said, three times now I'm flooded. It's ridiculous that nobody will even give a phone call back. So still, I don't want to say anything bad because then you get blacklisted, then nothing gets done, all kinds of things, you know, nobody does for you. They don't pick up the garbage, I've been through that already. You know, things like that go on when you say something bad about DPW. Now, the pond also, that it's filled, see, we get the rainwater and it floods, and then that water just sits there, it's stagnant water. It's even a health issue now because the mosquitoes, the flies, the bugs, the gnats. This year, I've lived there eight years now, and I've never seen it so, so bad. Can somebody, can one of you guys call Dennis Gallagher and ask him to come out and see that that pond is completely filled with sediment? There is no drainage at all now. It's crazy. I don't know what more to do.
I will do that, and I do believe we sent a request to Mr. Gallagher to address that situation. We haven't heard back. We haven't heard back yet, obviously.
Exactly. Haven't heard back from him. Nobody hears back from him, you know? Please help. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address council?
Fifth order, five motions.
Mr. Perry, do you have any motions or comments?
Yeah, just, just a couple. From last week, I just wanted to send a thank you out. I know we just had a little DPW conversation, but I do want to send them some thanks. They installed a couple of children at play signs in the neighborhood. They were up within 24 hours. I know that because the residents gave me a call, and they wanted me to pass along a thank you to DPW for, for that timely, that timely installation on the children at play signs. Also, I want to send a big thank you out to Scranton Police Department. A couple days ago, there was a wrong-way driver that hit one of my friends. The friend wasn't seriously injured, but nonetheless was, you know, hit by a wrong-way driver. And the police, you know, when, when you find out somebody that you know has been, you know, been hurt, you know, you make every effort to try to do what you could, and it wasn't too far from where I live, so by the time I got there, the police department was already there with, and had everything under control. And you talk about a very, and again, a lot of people know this who deal with first responders, but somebody like myself, who I don't get to deal with them every day, it's just a really fluid environment, to say the least, when you get to an accident scene. And, you know, their professionalism, I know we can't say this enough about them, but they really know how to handle their business, and, and they're, they're the best at what they do. And I just want to thank them for, for everything they did, just to not only make sure they were safe, to bring justice to it, but to make sure that all the other cars coming down the street were protected. It was something to see. They're, they're just a great operation, and they're a bunch of professionals. I want to thank them. We talked about the capital budget, Joanna. I, I believe that from the sewer sale, I think we earmarked two and a half million, I believe, for capital improvements, and then that money was up for discussion on how it was going to be spent. At the time, Mr. Balzoni explained to us that in the general budget, there really wasn't much room for, to earmark anything for capital budget, and if there was, there wasn't much to get anything accomplished. So, once we get this assessment of the $8 million, that's, this is the jumping off point, the starting point on now, if that's really what it's going to cost, we know what we have, what are we going to spend it, how are we going to allocate those funds? So that, this starts the discussion right now on, on what's going to be done. But as, I believe, don't hold me this, I think it was two, two and a half million is what we earmarked from the sale for capital improvements. But that wasn't just necessarily for City Hall, that was for, that was going to be for any capital improvements that we want to do on any city assets. So that's, that, that's where we are with money-wise on that. And I'm going to save everything else I have for our agenda items tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Donahue. Any motions or comments?
Yes, I just want to briefly comment on not only the multiple articles that have appeared in the Scranton Times over the past few weeks regarding a property on Columbia Street, and also the Castle House on Richmond Street, but also on the overall issues regarding the License and Inspection Department. In the six months I've been on council, the number two, the two biggest complaints I get involve either pave cuts or the Lips Department. And I agree with both Councilmen Gawn that we have to work with all developers instead of working against them, and also with Councilman Evans that, you know, we need to address this issue before we lose more blocks and neighborhoods to blight demolition. The politically correct term to describe how the Lips Department functions would, would be to call it selective enforcement. But I need to take it a step further, because I believe it needs to be said. I believe that office is being used to try to settle personal and/or political grudges, and that needs to end immediately. This is not how government should function, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Evans, do you have any motions or comments?
Yes, thank you. As a former member of the city's Historical Architectural Review Board, or HARM, and a former president and past or current member of the Architectural Heritage Association, I am extremely encouraged by the steps being taken to finally address the much-needed repairs, renovations, and restoration of Scranton City Hall. As a generation of deferred maintenance, stopgap repairs, combined with the lack of foresight and finances, it's now time to stop kicking the can down the road. As stewards of this building and this government, it's now time for all of us to step up and do what needs to be done. This building is not only our link to the past, but through a thoughtful restoration and a fresh look at how interior space can be better utilized, City Hall can be a link to the future as well. So I appreciate and would like to recognize B. April Zoney for his efforts in pushing this initiative to the forefront. This building is far too important and too historically and architecturally significant to be allowed to deteriorate any further. So count me in as a supporter of this initiative, in fact, count me as all-in. Also, as the newest member of the CDSP Board, a subsidiary of NDC, that is contracted to manage the city's garages and on-street parking, I was officially put on the board 6/25/18 as City Council's representative. Of course, the request for information through a right-to-know occurred long before I was put on the board. But in continuing effort to bring a new level of transparency, my request for periodic updates by NDC as Scranton City Council will begin with the public caucus on July 23rd to discuss a 2018 semi-annual financial and operations report. So certainly that is encouraging. However, as a member of the CDSP Board, I expect even more transparency. To that end, I suggested in an email to members of NDC management today that they may want to include information requested in the right-to-know request as part of their presentation to City Council next week. And if that does not happen, I will make a formal request to the CDSP Board to release that information as soon as possible. NDC and ABM, through the CDSP Board, have asked us to spend public dollars to make improvements to public garages, as well as make improvements to public on-street parking areas. Yet meetings remain private, and limited information is released without great hesitation and contrination. Public officials and the public deserve better. I am but one vote on the board, but I will continue to press for full transparency, and that's all I have for now.
Thank you, Mr. Gawn. Any motions or comments?
Yes, thank you. Quite a few. Mrs. Reed, I was approached by a resident of North Scranton about dumping in the 500 block of Whale Street, an empty lot, and the neighbors there believe that the housing authority owns it, so if we could please check into that. We did send a request in the 2200 block of Kelly Avenue. Residents were concerned about a faded one-way sign and a do-not-enter sign, so we sent that to DPW. I did attend the zoning board meeting last week regarding the North Scranton apartment complex. Developer wants to put 252 apartment buildings, or apartments, rather, throughout 10 buildings in North Scranton. And I can tell you from living in that neighborhood that there is absolutely nobody that is for this project. And there was, I think, over 100 people that packed this, these council chambers for the zoning board meeting last week in opposition to it. The matter did get continued until next August, until this August, coming up, August 8th at 6:00 PM. So I would again urge anyone in North Scranton to come out and to oppose that project. I did attend the West Grant Neighbors Association meeting last week as well, and there were many issues and concerns that were discussed. This was the first time that they had actually met. It was a roomful of concerned and passionate individuals in West Granton. Mr. Donahue already touched on this, but, and Mr. Donahue was there as well, I can tell you that one of the major issues that the residents brought up was not getting a returned phone call from people who work in City Hall, whether it be a department head or one of the employees. Specifically, many of the complaints came from the Licensing and Inspections Department. So, Mrs. Reed, if we can send something to the mayor and inform him that people around the city, this isn't just in West Granton, it's in Green Ridge, it's in Southside, it's in North Scranton, it's really every neighborhood meeting I go to, people complain, they call City Hall, either they don't get a returned call, or somebody does answer, they get booted around in different departments, and then they don't know what happened with their issues. So it's extremely frustrating. One of the programs, Councilman Evans presented it a few months ago, and I think everyone on this council agrees with it, is the See, Click, Fix program. I believe that if somebody calls City Hall with a complaint, there should be a paper trail of that complaint. It should be logged someplace, so that if it's going to take a week and a half or two weeks to get fixed, the person who calls should know that. They should get an email, they should get a notification that their problem was taken care of. So there are better ways, there are more efficient ways to deal with problems throughout the city. And I'm not just blaming this administration, because I think this has gone on for decades, but there is a problem, people are frustrated, and they get disgusted with City Hall, and then they just end up giving up altogether. So I would like to see something sent to the mayor, so that he hopefully is aware of that. There also was a gentleman at the West Grant Neighborhood Meeting who, to his credit, takes the time to clean in and around where the viaduct is there on Fourth Avenue. And I've said this before, you know, the gentleman mentioned that he ends up, you know, being the only one that cleans it. He wasn't complaining about it, but he was simply saying that people say they want to come out and help, but usually they never do. I brought this up before, I've seen across, really, the country, cities who have yearly neighborhood cleanups, yearly park cleanups, and the administration coordinates that. And they happen at the same time every year, so there's no surprise that we're going to clean Rockwell Park in April, next year it'll be May, maybe June, and then it kind of gets all discombobulated. So I do think, and I would again urge the mayor, to come up with a yearly schedule where the DPW coordinates with these neighborhood groups, they go out, they pick these spots, and they, and they clean them up, because the neighbors will come out. I just think the administration needs to make that a priority. Also, one of the issues that came out of the neighborhood meeting was street markings. Either there are none in, in certain parts of West Granton, or they are faded. So if we could send something to DPW about that, so somebody from DPW can go out and make an assessment of that situation. And it's also a public safety issue. Would like somebody from Licensing and Inspections to go out and take a look at the 300 block of North Sumner Avenue, there's several quality-of-life issues there. Also, the 300 block of Railroad Avenue, neighbor expressed concern, the trash pickup is Friday, there are people putting their trash out a few days early, not in cans, there's garbage all over the place. So if we could send something to Lips on that as well. I also attended the Green Ridge Neighborhood Meeting. They would like to know the status of 934 Woodlawn Street. It's apparently condemned, so they'd like an update on that. There was a woman at this meeting that complained, and I can back her up on this, about the condition of the 3,000 block of Oliphant Avenue, several potholes, so if DPW can make their way out there to fill them. And there's an overgrowth on a lot, and I'll give you the address for that, Mrs. Reed, after the meeting. Also, residents brought up, and I wasn't aware of this, construction going on near the greenhouse at Naught Park. They would like to know what this is, so if we could reach out to Mr. Fallon and find out, you know, what they're, what they're building there, what they're putting there. We got an update from the city solicitor on the status of the treehouse. The engineer has completed 75% of the plans, the submission for repairs. Budget-related questions may account for the remaining 25%. There will be a meeting this week, next at the latest, and the engineer will finalize following that meeting. And I'm glad to see that, because, you know, I use Naught Park often, and it is really an embarrassment that the, the treehouse has lagged and has not been open for this long. Also, I asked for an update on the lawsuits from the city solicitor. The Act 511 case is pending a decision from the judge, there's still nothing on preemptory judgment. The refuse case is pending class notice. The city opposed some of the language in the notice, and they're waiting on the judge to decide on that. Rental registration lawsuit is in discovery, which is the information-sharing period of the process. And the sewer proceed lawsuit, they're waiting for the oral argument on preliminary objections to be scheduled. So we should see something on these lawsuits in the next few months. I also asked last week about the recent agreement between the city and the, I believe, the fire union employees to split the cost of the required physician evaluation, which is involved with the disability pension process. I was questioning the cost of the city in this cost-share arrangement, so we did receive a reply from the administration. There will be a memorandum of understanding between the city and the police and fire unions. It's currently being drafted, and the details will be available once all parties have signed off on that. And that's all I have this week. Thank you.
Thank you. Just two items. The first is the double pension item. Unfortunately, it has been taking longer than expected to get legislation put together, but rest assured, there will be legislation coming together to prevent this from happening again. As far as comments on the report, again, we're very limited as to what we could say per the agreement between council and the state police. So the items, the individuals that are referenced in the report, unfortunately, we're not able to, by court order, get into any of that. Now, we were able to, by reading through that report, see some of the items that happened, and at least I have a idea and a better understanding on how some people that weren't entitled to double pensions receive them. But the goal is, once legislation is put in place, that in the future, there'll be, if there ever is any type of incentive given to employees to retire early, that it's done in a thoughtful process, in a process that is streamlined to avoid this type of issue from happening again. And the second issue I wanted to talk about, Councilman Evans actually touched on already, and I believe was reported in the newspaper, is the condition of City Hall. For decades, as Councilman Evans said, generations, City Hall has been neglected from a maintenance standpoint. You could just take a walk around the building, and you could see many areas that are deteriorating, and you could see where repairs have to be done. And that's only what meets the eye. There's much more under the surface that needs to be maintained and improved, including energy efficiency upgrades, number of items. So I am in support of the city doing, getting a full analysis on what needs to be done to get this building up to 2018 standards. But when that, when those findings come back, I think at that point in time, all options need to be on the table. Again, we're talking, people are, the number of $8 million has been thrown around to get the building to where it should be. That's an awful lot of money. There may be better options than spending $8 million. As much as I want to see the building restored, it is a very large, large number. And hopefully, we can find grants and be able to, you know, move things around to make City Hall more efficient and work better. But we'll take it step by step. But I'm glad to see that something finally is being done, one way or the other, with regards to the condition of City Hall. And that is all.
5B for introduction and ordinance granting a temporary construction and permanent maintenance easement agreement on property owned by the city of Scranton to Scranton-Lac Juana Industrial Building Company for the installation of sidewalks at the Mount Pleasant Corporate Center along Mount Pleasant Drive, as more fully described in Exhibit A.
This time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5C for introduction, a resolution authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a grant agreement by and between the city of Scranton hereinafter referred to as the city and/or grantor and Scranton-Lac Juana Industrial Building Company, hereinafter referred to as the grantee sub-recipient, in the amount of $50,000 for the installation of sidewalks at the Mount Pleasant Corporate Center located along Mount Pleasant Drive.
This time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5C be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, just one item I wanted to point out, because it was brought up. These items are not in relation to the Sheets gas station getting put in there. I'm sure they will benefit from the sidewalks being put in at Mount Pleasant, but anyone that goes to, for instance, the Geisinger facility that's in there, you could see that there's, there's not access for pedestrians, and especially with a school so close by, and a medical facility, that if somebody who doesn't drive, if they need to go to a doctor's appointment at that facility, we certainly should have sidewalks in, in that area. So I am in support of this legislation. Anyone else? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Sixth order, 6A, no business at this time. Seventh order, 7A, for consideration by the Committee on Finance for adoption, file of Council Number 25, 2018, creating and establishing special city account numbers noted entitled "Police Grants" for receiving funds from multiple short-term or passed-through police grant sources that require funds, excuse me, fund accounts separate from the general fund.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Finance?
As chairperson for the Committee on Finance, I recommend final passage of Item 7A.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Goham?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes, I hereby declare Item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, Resolution Number 59, 2018, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a professional services contract with Abrahamsen Conneboy and Abrahamsen, PC, for special labor counsel legal services for the city of Scranton.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of Item 7B.
Second.
Second.
On the question?
Yes, on the question. You know, at this point, I really don't even know where to begin with this legislation, but let me check through some things here so that people can understand, you know, kind of the ridiculous things that, that I'm dealing with, and I believe the whole council's dealing with. Last week, I asked several questions about this contract, and I did receive a reply from our city solicitor, Jessica Esgra, on Friday. And I'm going to read through some of the responses, but I was not satisfied with many of them that were given, because most of my questions were not actually answered, they were kind of danced around, and I, and I really did not appreciate that. So my first question was about the RFQ, how it was advertised, I asked for an explanation of that whole process, which, I mean, I thought was a pretty simple, pretty simple ask. The answer was that the RFQ was advertised in the Scranton Times, following the normal advertisement procedure we follow here in the city. And then the, the advertisement procedure was not detailed, so I had to go back and, and ask for that this morning, and I did get it, and I appreciate that. But again, I asked a simple question, did not get a simple answer. Number two, second question I asked was to provide the reason that the contract was well past the expiration date of the contract before legislation was submitted to council's office for consideration. I asked what the reason was for the delay. The answer was that, it says, "My approach to crafting bids is to ensure that they are thorough and updated to reflect the city's present needs, which requires an investment of time. This goal must be balanced with my many duties here at the city from preparing all legislation, handling litigation matters, managing all insurance, defense litigation, and claims, preparing and negotiating contracts and agreements, researching and responding to legal questions and issues of the various city departments, involvement and oversight of various projects, etc., to name a few." Again, didn't really answer my question, and quite frankly, I went back and looked at the, the bid, the RFP from 2014, most of the language was the same in 2018, except for one difference, which I'll talk about in a second, and most of it is boilerplate. So again, I'm not really buying that it took, you know, a few months to, to put that together when the contract had expired. The third question was, "How much has the law firm billed the city pursuant to the previous labor contract, and for any and all other work performed for the city during that time period, including work to date?" I did receive a vendor report, and I had to add it up, obviously, because everybody's so busy in City Hall. Now, the numbers were very small, and I, and I want to say, I think I got this total right, but I'm sure other people will double check. To date, and this is as of June 25th, Abrahamsen-Conneboy and Abrahamsen has billed the city $890,607.63. Now, this figure does include the two separate payments of $200,000, that'd be one for the parking deal and one for the sewer authority deal. The parking deal was included in the vendor report, the sewer authority payment was not, obviously, because that money came out of the proceeds of the sewer authority. So close to a million dollars there. My next question was, "Has the city been successful in defending grievances under labor matters that have gone to arbitration? What is the percentage that the city has actually been successful?" So in all the matters, what is the percentage the city has been successful? Very clear. The answer was, "Abrahamsen-Conneboy and Abrahamsen has successfully negotiated five collective bargaining agreements for the city since 2014. He served as lead counsel in the back pay mandamus action for the police and fire unions, which was successfully negotiated and resolved. He also successfully defended the city in the arbitrations regarding cost of living adjustments and the age requirements for retirement, which has resulted in a staggering improvement in the actuarial valuations of the city's pension funds." Most of this is already included in the, in the memo in the RFP, by the way. Because of the monumental successes, I have the utmost confidence in Abrahamsen-Conneboy and Abrahamsen to continue the city's success in labor negotiations and arbitrations. Again, what is the percentage that the city has actually been successful? That question is not answered. So I would like that answered, and I'm going to make a motion to table at the end of my comments here. The most egregious response here, in my opinion, as an elected official, comes for number five. I asked, and I referenced the attachment E, which is in the RFP. Now, keep in mind, I didn't put that in there, nobody on council put that in there. The city is requesting this information from the firms that reply to the RFP. I asked why the submittal, Mr. Abrahamsen's submittal, did not comply, because the information pertaining to the recipient, the amount of the contribution, and the date in which the contribution was made is not disclosed. The answer that was given by the city solicitor is, "Information regarding political contributions are public record." Again, that's not what I asked. I understand that it's public record. My question was, "Please explain the reason for the omission of the date and amount of contributions, and why this was acceptable to the city." If you're, you're not going to require firms to fill out the RFP correctly, then don't put the attachment in. So I, again, I don't understand the answer here, and I was not satisfied with most that I just read. Now, one of the things that we just received early this morning, right before the council meeting, was a response from Abrahamsen-Conneboy and Abrahamsen, and they do include the amount of the contribution, the date, and the person who contributed, and who they contributed to. So I appreciate that. But again, and Councilman Evans made this point in the caucus, another tactic, they're giving us this information right before a council meeting with little or no time to actually review the answer, which, again, I find unacceptable. I asked about this last week. Second thing in the attachment E, the disclosure form, number eight, it clearly asks if the person who submits the RFP has donated any money to any campaign, any candidate of a person in Pennsylvania, in the state of Pennsylvania. And that was not filled out, and I find it hard to believe that Mr. Abrahamsen and anyone in his law firm did not donate any money over $500 to any other candidates in Pennsylvania. And I'll also point out, I have here for agenda item 7C, we have a contract with LaBella Associates for engineering services. And I had Mrs. Reed print pages 51 through 65 for their Act 44 disclosure form and their affidavit, disclosure by current contractors. They submitted about 17 to 20 pages of backup, where they detail very specifically all of the contributions that they have given to candidates in Pennsylvania, in Lacawanna County, in the city of Scranton. So again, I would say to my colleagues that this RFP does not comply. Again, I mean, you know, I have to wonder, if, if I wasn't here to look at this, if I didn't bring this up, would anybody have brought this up? Or are we going to let it slide because this firm is a contributor to the mayor's campaign? It's very simple, it's very simple in the RFP. Fill it out the right way, that's what I was saying last week, and that's why I think this, this bid is still incomplete. So again, I asked this week, where is the transparency? I don't think it was filled out the right way. So it's seriously concerning, and the response from the city solicitor is extremely troubling. I would like to know why we're going to award a lawyer a contract when they were not responsive to the bid. This is not, ladies and gentlemen, a good indication of the work that they'll perform, and the bid, in my opinion, is unacceptable. Also, the language of the RFP. In 2014, I looked back at the RFP, and the only major change in the language of the scope of services was that in 2018, this line was put in. "Strong preference will be given to those applicants who have experience and understanding of the unique culture of the city of Scranton's labor unions." So I would like to know, and hopefully this gets tabled tonight, why that language was put in. I believe Mrs. Schumacher brought it up last week, and so did I. But why was this sentence put in that RFP? What is the difference between the one in 2014 and 2018, and why was that necessary? I don't believe, quite frankly, that this language is fair, and I think it limits the pool of applicants, and I find it extremely interesting that we would want to do that. I think you would want to get the best bang for your buck and the most qualified applicants. It seems like we're directing the work to someone who currently performs it or has done it in the past, so we're limiting the potential talent pool here, and we do have a robust legal community in the area. As for some of the comments made in the paper this morning, you know, Mr. Abrahamsen was quoted as saying, "Obviously, our firm and Bill Gahan don't see eye to eye, but if council asks us, or the mayor's solicitor asks for more information, we'll be happy to do so." First of all, you know, the comment that we don't see eye to eye, this is nothing personal, this is a matter of transparency. A year ago, all I simply did was ask for information, I was doing my job. I'm doing the same thing this year. And again, Mr. Abrahamsen is making it seem like we're asking for additional information. That was included in the RFP, they didn't fill the RFP out. They either willfully did that, or they should have known better, which is scary in and of itself, that we're going to put our trust in a law firm, and they're omitting that information. So I, again, I have serious concerns, I have questions that are still not answered. The other issue at play here is to do with the shared services committee. We have a meeting, we finally got a meeting with the city solicitor on July 24th, to discuss the possibility of sharing legal services with the school district in an effort to save money and be more efficient. So we were trying to take a look at, Councilman Donahue and I, and Director Cognetti and Gil Martin, the possibility that maybe we would co-bid this labor contract, this labor RFP with the school district, to be more efficient. Is that a possibility? We had asked a month or two ago for a meeting with the city solicitor, and we just got one on July 24th. So I'm going to ask that this legislation be tabled until I get adequate responses to my questions, and we do have an opportunity to meet with the city solicitor. So at this time, I'd like to make a motion to table agenda item 7B.
Second.
On the question?
Yes, on the question, last week, I was very clear about the RFQ process. If you're going to answer the que, if it's on the application, it has to be answered. Once we start deciding on what questions are allowed to get answered and what aren't, then what's the point of a true RFQ? I believe, and question five was answered, question eight wasn't. So as far as I'm concerned, this is still an incomplete RFQ, and until all the questions get answered on that, I'm in agreeance with the table.
Anyone else? Excuse me, on the question, I certainly would like to see many of city council's questions answered, especially those that are within the scope of the RFP. I received the response to most of the questions and a partial reply to attachment E at 11:50 AM today. So clearly, we have not had an opportunity to review the answers and where we are with that information. However, I made my intentions known to my colleagues that until the lawsuit against Councilman Gahn is withdrawn with prejudice, effectively ending any chance of resurrecting the lawsuit in its current state, and until attachment E, specifically number five of the disclosure document, is fully filled out, then this resolution, resolution should not move to a full vote. I will continue to vote to table this legislation, and I believe it should remain, excuse me, remain tabled until such a time as those conditions are met.
And, and just to add to that, you know, in the newspaper this morning, it says that Mr. Abrahamsen was surprised that I brought up the defamation case again last week, and he said, "It's not coming back, that's old news." I would disagree with that. I did check on the Prethonitaries website, and the matter is still, has been withdrawn without prejudice, which means, and they made a point last year to say that they could refile that at any time. Now, that doesn't bother me, because I did nothing wrong. They could refile it tomorrow, and I would fight it all the way to the end, because I did not do anything wrong, I did not say anything wrong, I was just doing my job. But, you know, as a, as a public official, I just find it amazing that there's a possibility that we're going to award a law firm who took that action, that, as I think Councilman Evans said last year, sent a chilling effect, and it should send a chilling effect, on every public official in Lacawanna County. The fact that one person would ask a question, and several of my colleagues asked the same questions thereafter, and that you would then be sued for that, or the threat of a lawsuit, and then dangling over, it over somebody's head. And then the fact that in this RFP, there was things omitted, and it took me to actually say that and ask for the information, and then in the newspaper, Mr. Abrahamsen's making it seem like he's doing us a favor by providing this extra information, when in fact, it was clearly requested in the RFP. So again, I would hope that my colleagues go along with this and table it, so we have further information, and so we can meet with the city solicitor on July 24th. Thank you.
All those in favor of tabling signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and Item 7B is tabled.
7C for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, Resolution Number 60, 2018, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a professional services contract with LaBella Associates for City of Scranton General Consulting Engineering Services for the period August 1, 2018 through July 31, 2021.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of Item 7C.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahan?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes, I hereby declare Item 7C legally and lawfully adopted.
7D for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, Resolution Number 61, 2018, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract with Luther Bowen, PC, for City of Scranton Landscape Architect Engineering Design Services, Linden Street Green Space and Pocket Park Project.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of Item 7D.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahan?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes, I hereby declare Item 7D legally and lawfully adopted.
7E for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, Resolution Number 62, 2018, reappointing Sean Walsh, 2821 Cedar Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18505, as a member of the Board of Zoning Appeals for the city of Scranton. Mr. Walsh's term expired on July 1, 2018, and his new term will expire on July 1, 2023.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of Item 7E.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahan?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes, I hereby declare Item 7E legally and lawfully adopted.
7F for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, Resolution Number 63, 2018, appointment of Paul Marks, 724 Gibbons Street, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18505, as a member of the Board of Zoning Appeals for the city of Scranton. Mr. Marks will replace Alan O'Neil, whose term expired on July 1, 2018. Mr. Marks' term will commence on July 2, 2018, and expire on July 1, 2023.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of Item 7F.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahan?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes, I hereby declare Item 7F legally and lawfully adopted. If there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Meeting adjourned.